I campaigned for six months. I went to a thousand houses. I went up to one guy's house. I had my flyers. He didn't see what it was and he just goes, "I told you sons of bitches, I don't need a new roof." And I joke and he was like, "Nope, nope, not a roofer. It's worse."
Oh, it's worse?
It's a politician. He thought that was funny.
All right. What's up, guys? Welcome back to B Frank Podcast. Today, we're doing a special thing, the co-hosts with Tony, Malo.
Hello.
And then myself. And then we have a special guest. He's everything. Like, explain who he is.
Everything that Adam Robb does. I met Adam as an actor and then he became a wedding videographer, photographer, then producer, those were at the same time, then a producer in commercial world, then it moved into train depot owner slash wedding venue. Now you say that, right? Yeah, sure. Then film producer again. And then city councilman.
Yeah, we're gonna cover a lot of stuff, you know, like those kind of stuff in profession. We talk about money. We talk about mental health and we talk about job description. I think everyone should listen to it. We had a great conversation. So let's get started.
I don't know how. Like, I don't know how. I don't know how that's legitimate. Because, and I think also for people that feel a certain way and that feel anti-establishment or they feel like everyone's crooks, whatever, I always find it interesting that they don't really realize that they're being marketed to in that moment. That if they're asking the city councilman what he thinks about Ukraine, that is because the news and the media has only put that in your head that that's a priority. You're being marketed to.
Right.
But right now, we're talking about your sidewalks.
Right, almost like clockwork.
It really is.
Yep. They've been told that this is what you're supposed to think about. And so they do. Yeah, that's a really good point.
And of course, think about it, care about it, but at a city council meeting, yeah. So how, what is, what is your, give me your elevator pitch when I'm like, what do you think about this Biden, Biden emails? Wait, what's his son's name? Hunter Biden emails.
What, do I say that to everybody?
Yeah.
Oh, I've never been asked that specifically.
You knock on the door and I open it.
Oh, oh, oh.
And I'm like, yes, can I help you? Who are you?
Honestly, how I would answer that when people did do that, I would just go, um, "Yeah, man, that's just a, gosh, it's just crazy." I don't want to like, okay, here, let me, let me answer this with another question.
Yeah.
People would ask, "Are you Republican or Democrat?" And a lot of times, if they really pushed, I would answer it, but I would say, "Well, that doesn't really matter. It's, this is bipartisan here and it's, we're all in this together." And I really mean that.
Yeah.
There's not any doubt here. So it doesn't, it doesn't matter. But if they really wanted to, I'd tell them, but I'd say, "Well, my candidate or my opponent and I are both Republicans, so you're just screwed either way if you're..."
Okay. Well, that's another thing that's good for people to know is so city council is a bipartisan ruling. And is there anything, and this is going to get political, but is there anything that if you were a Democrat, like say you were really, really left, how would that affect city council issues?
No, I mean, my best-
Like decision-wise?
My best friend on council, who's becoming a really good friend in real life, is a hard leftist.
And does he make decisions, is he or she?
He.
He? Does he make decisions differently than you based off? Yeah, because it's-
We're both constitutionalists and, and it's really straightforward on what people want. Like, if you have an F Joe Biden flag or an F Trump flag, we both agree you have the right to fly it. If you have a gay pride event happening in a park or you have a Christian event, like we were just talking about there or a whatever, you have a constitutional right to have it. Like, we're both on the same page on like, almost everything like that.
Oh, gotcha. So sometimes your political differences would probably be federal?
Yeah.
Differences?
Yeah, yeah.
Which doesn't apply to city?
It's not an issue on the local level. If it is an issue, then you're probably in the wrong because you're pushing things where it shouldn't be pushed.
That's a great response, councilman.
I'm running for senator soon, so.
And then he will answer the red and blue questions.
Don't answer, totally, no. Uh, no, I really, but I really feel that way.
Yeah.
You shouldn't be in the spot where you're taking that deep of your personal views and pushing it on the local level that hard.
Right.
You shouldn't be.
And so being like, uh, so if you're a Republican, you believe, you said you believe in the Constitution, the fact that you can hold stuff. So if you were someone that was anti-gay, for example, do you think that would affect, like if you had a councilman that was very conservative, that would they be, try to vote against like what you said, for instance, like a gay pride?
Yeah, well, they'd be, and they'd be, I would tell that person, uh, "Look, regardless of how we may feel personally about this issue, this has been decided long ago at the federal level and the Constitution and the Supreme Court. You cannot, you cannot do this. This has been decided a long time ago."
And this is even if all the constituents have an issue with it?
Yeah, you can't do it.
You guys go down to the city.
You can't. It's already been, I mean, Oklahoma City tried this in 2002 where people threw a big fit about like a gay event. And it's, here's what I will say. Okay, well, go ahead. Here's what's gonna happen. We're gonna have a massive lawsuit. We're gonna lose. Or you're gonna pay millions of dollars.
That's where your, that's where your producer brain comes in, yeah.
They're gonna have a bigger event next year because they're gonna be motivated and fired up. It's still going to happen. Go ahead. I actually said that to somebody. I said, "Go ahead." I mean, it-
Because this actually, this actually has happened in Guthrie and you had to have these conversations.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just like a-
Hypotheticals over here. I don't know.
No, that actually happened. Yeah, it's like, you can't, the flag thing happened.
Oh, pride flag?
No, the F Biden, F Trump flags.
And people calling and complaining and saying-
Yeah, and they're saying, "We should take them down, blah, blah, blah." And I'm like, "Well, you didn't care when the other one was flying." And I said that to both people, you know, "It's only when your team does." And it's, look, both people have a constitutional right to do it.
Right, right.
But the person I was telling you about who's far left on council, see, we both agree on all, we're just in agreement on all these things.
Right, right. So it works out?
Yeah.
Is there any, how many people are on the council?
Seven.
There's seven, so it has to be an odd number for voting?
Yeah.
Do you feel like it's pretty, like, yes and no votes are pretty divided or do you guys tend to usually-
Usually, well, no, this is a-
In your case?
This is a federal thing too. A lot of people don't realize that, and this is like how you lie with numbers. So I'm going like, this is like folding open.
Yeah.
You can say technically that the most extreme conservative and hard liberal on the federal level agree 99% of the time. And the reason why that's kind of like a tricky lie is because people don't realize that they're voting on all kinds of other things that just aren't sexy, as we call it. And so like, like, "All right, we all agree to have vending machines in the lobby at the Capitol Building. Yay or nay? All right, yay." "We all agree that we're gonna keep the colors of, you know, certain type of red on the flag, or the font is this color." They do technically have to vote on all that. And so, so when you add all that up, you're 99% in agreement. It's just when, and how you can lie with that is you say like, "Well, you agreed with Nancy Pelosi 99% of the time." And people in their mind think, "Oh, so on abortion and healthcare, 99% of the time." And that's a lie, that's the way you lie. Uh, everybody's-
That's so interesting.
Yeah, everybody's in an agreement. So, so to your question on council, most of the time, we're always in agreement because it's stuff like, "Do we all agree to let this engineer go in and approve this bridge to be repaired?" Yes, we agree to let him do a report. Do we all agree to let this doctor here, do we let her to do an evaluation of this? Yes, we want her to do. So we're all in agreement on that kind of stuff. But on like the more controversial issues.
Is there a controversial issue that you can, that you can talk about just to have an example?
Yeah, I had one where, um, we had a woman who was blackmailed in town by a councilman.
Oh, wow.
And, um, she rightfully so wanted restitution from that. And she wasn't getting it. And so she went to a council meeting to read this out loud, the letter. Read it, yeah.
In front of the blackmailer?
Right, on council. I wasn't on yet.
Oh.
This is when I was campaigning. And so they decided right then and there that they would no longer allow free comments from the public at city council anymore.
Oh, wow.
She's standing up there with her note in her hand at the podium. They're like, "Let's, I propose to pass a resolution right now. We no longer allow public and free comments unless they get approval first."
That's shady.
Yeah, that's really bad.
I will be.
And I, and in, and in my-
I hope that councilman is watching. You're shady.
Right, right. So they, they-
This is why people vote. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and she was just like, "I can't believe it." And, uh, and-
And, and so now it's about, are the other council, councilmen, I'd say councilpeople are gonna vote? Like, you have to, right, the other six have to say yay or nay?
Approve that, yeah. They all did, but one. And, uh, so she couldn't speak anymore and read it. And now it was where, so if you wanted to say anything in front of council, you gotta submit, submit what it is first. And then the way they spun it was to people out in the public who was just hearing about it, "Oh, we're just doing it to be organized. So people can get on a list, so we know who's going where and how long it's gonna be, so we can just have it organized." And, and I'm like, because the people would tell me that when I'd see them on the street, "Well, I heard about that, but I talked to, talked to them about it. It was just because they were wanting to-"
They didn't want it to ramble on all night?
Yeah, I just want to ramble on all night. And I'm like, "Wow, it's funny that they just, the timing of when they decided to put that in, boy, what a coincidence." Right when that lady was up at the podium. Right, and, uh, and they-
And about the councilman that run the proposal?
Right, right, right. And they don't tell you guys that they can choose not to put that on that agenda. They left that part out. So anyways, I-
Crazy.
Yeah, so that was that-
That's good tea, that's good Guthrie tea.
I know. So I like during, and that was during my campaign, and I completely switched it over to like, that's like my number one thing. Like, I will reverse that or vote to reverse that if I get on.
Ah, we were like, "We will be here all night if we have to be."
Yeah.
The whole point is to be, issues at a local level. So listen, if you want to come up and ramble about-
Yeah, yeah. I was just like, "Vote for me. I will do my best to overturn that, even if it's against me. If you have something against me, you come up there, you get your five minutes, you say it."
Got it.
And I did do that. So I-
Oh, nice.
When I won.
Nice councilman.
Yep, I won. And then there was the one guy that was on there that didn't, that voted for not to do that.
Right.
And then the liberal-
So he's still on the council?
Yes. And then the liberal guy I told you about that I'm friends with, he was elected then too.
Okay.
So then there's three of us. And then one guy switched his vote. So then we overturned it my second session on there too.
Because, and I'm sure that that individual councilman still voted, of course, to keep it, to keep it where you can have free comments, yeah.
Yeah. So then we switched it back and put it back where you can do public comments. And then the one that got in trouble resigned.
Oh, okay, okay. That's so interesting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so the really liberal councilman you guys have, when he was campaigning, did he have to address that he was a hard leftist or again, did he say-
I should say, he didn't camp, he was a former councilman.
Oh, gotcha.
He didn't have to campaign this time. He, he took the guy who resigned's spot.
Oh, got it.
I'm giving you all that.
So good, I love it.
So the guy who did the like, kind of threatening messages, he resigned, yeah. He resigned because it was getting really heavy. And then this, the guy was, the liberal guy was put in that position. The council voted to put him in there. And so that was him and then me, the guy who voted for it the first time, and then one guy flipped his vote. And then we, we got it. Yeah. So that was like a big deal, though.
That's a pretty big deal.
Yeah, it was a huge deal.
And you're, and every council person lives in this town. Is that like a rule? That you have to be part of the town?
Yeah, they have to live in city limits. And then we have three wards and there's two from each ward, one, two, and three. And then there, and so that's six. And then the mayor is voted at large by everybody.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so that's how that works.
Sort of a big part of, okay. Yeah.
Sorry.
So the mayor is campaigning, but the, so the mayor is a big part of the city council as far as like it's-
The mayor position.
Like you're his cabinet. Would that be fair to say?
No, honestly, no. It would be if it was a strong mayor council, but we're a city manager. So, um, the way it works is that all city council and the mayor each have one vote. And majority wins, so four out of seven, it passes. Yeah, the mayor, only difference between the mayor is just a figurehead and he or she will nominate for commissions and we all vote on it anyway. So there's really not much difference between the mayor and the city council.
Is, or is city council, are they part of like the growth, it seems like a stupid question, but are they part of the growth of the town as far as like, I know that Guthrie is a lot of abandoned, I don't say banned, what do you say, like vacant, vacant buildings? And I know that there's only like a, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, like a small handful of owners that own these spaces.
Yeah.
So is city council part of this like resurgence of like, let's fill these buildings up with businesses?
Technically, they're, those are privately owned, so you're not allowed to do that. You can do like a vacancy tax, I think. I, I don't, that wouldn't work, though, because certain owners that I know of in town, that would happen, abandoned buildings, I know that, it's hard, this, this, I'm gonna go deep. It's just like with-
Well, it's interesting because Guthrie's popular. People do films in Guthrie.
Yeah.
Big names come through and there's only so many businesses as far as like accommodations.
Right, yeah.
Diners, coffee shops, shopping. And it has so much, in my opinion, it has so much potential. And it could have more hotels, more accommodations.
Yeah.
Because it, films are coming there regardless. So why is it not-
Give this speech. I thought, yeah, yeah.
It's like, it's coming, guys. So let's actually have some, a little bit more accommodations. How to mention the housing. I mean, housings are cheap and I can't, there is several times that we've had, um, actors that are like living there basically for the weeks that they're filming and they're looking at houses in Guthrie to own. And I feel like they kind of don't because sometimes-
Yeah, it feels like it's an abandoned-
The opportunity just isn't quite, I think, I think what it could be.
Yeah, we have, we have like three or four people that own like 20 abandoned buildings downtown and it's been that way for 20 years and they're not gonna change. So.
Yeah.
We, we-
That's a shame.
I wanted to do something where we had the fire, we don't have a fire marshal anymore oddly enough. And I wanted to bring the fire. I know, and your response is how most normal people are.
Right, right, right.
I wanted to bring the fire marshal back for many reasons. One, yes, for the safety aspect. We do have fires.
And these buildings are old. Oh, the, uh, that one building?
Fiddle shop.
Yeah, the fiddle shop con on there.
And we had like nine fire departments show up and, and the only reason why it didn't burn down the whole block is because the wind was blowing in the other direction. And that's not, and I'm not insulting the fire departments. They're, they're awesome. It's just saying, that's how hard it is to like, yeah, to put a fire out. So-
And they came from other towns besides Guthrie? They had to all come?
Yeah, they all came from around to help. And my point is, is that, so even with nine fire departments, they, they struggled to put it out, meaning preventive measures is gonna be far more important than putting it out from that regard.
And costly.
Yes. Um, but I can't get city, I couldn't get them to do it. They don't want to do it.
They don't want a fire marshal?
No. Don't tread on me. And the other downtown merchants flipped out and they're like, "Oh, you're gonna make us-
Oh, because there's regulations?
Tear the doors down and put stuff in." I'm like, "No, we're not." I, I invite the state, the state fire marshal to come to my building every year and I don't have to do any of that. But-
Wow.
There you go. I, so I thought that was, I thought that was gonna help with like forcing the abandoned owners to like, okay, you at least have to have your roofs in order, no faulty wiring, no kindling lying around. It would force them to do some kind of upkeep. Yeah, well, no, they have like massive piles of old wood.
Oh.
Just lying in the middle of the room.
Yeah.
Like with sawdust everywhere. It's just like, like one mat, one spark, one match, one something.
Could really take down an entire block.
Yeah, but just take it out. So you can't do that. Hazardous chemicals, stuff like that.
Wow, I'm shook.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because all those buildings are touching each other too.
Right, that's the thing. Like, it's not at your house. It's not like your private house. It's, you're right, they're all touching. One negligent owner and people live upstairs. We'll take out the whole block. So it is my business.
And this is the oldest Victorian area in the country, like you said, that could just go up with some bad kindling.
Yeah.
And some punk kids hanging out.
We lost two of them, you know, like, what was it, four years ago, five years ago?
That was tragic.
Yeah, we lost two of them. And it would have been the whole block had it been the wind in the other direction, yeah.
Wow, okay. So I vote fire marshal. So people need to be like, "What's your stance on fire marshals when, next time you campaign?" Do you see yourself campaigning again? Or do you want to get through these three years?
Man, that's a good question. That's a really good question.
Yeah. Because this seems tough on you. You were-
It was. It was brutal.
And you were not expecting kind of the, the situations that you ran into?
No, it was, it was an experience I'll never forget, you know, and it's something you, nobody can be prepared for until you do it. I mean, I campaigned for six months. I went to a thousand houses.
Wow.
You know, and, um, I-
Not to mention groups, like you did like-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You go to the Lions Club and you'd go to like the, yeah, the county groups and stuff like that. I don't know if, um, I don't know if I have any ambition to go any, to like a higher office, like state rep or state senator or anything like that.
Does it put you in a whole new, like, do you have a whole new respect for the states' representatives that do, that go up to hire politicians? Or do you still have a certain level of, you have a certain level of corruption or feelings towards ones that, like, you've got to be insane to go that far, so?
Well, we all do have a, whether it be he or she, we all have a fraternity or sorority of understanding that we all went through it. There is that.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we can all relate to each other on knowing what it's like to have to go out and get cussed at, yell that, talk to thousands of people and, and do all of that. And even if you were the person that lost, you still get that too. Because you did the same thing.
You don't, yeah.
Yeah, you dealt with the same thing.
I can imagine you're like, someone's ego. It, I've always thought that to be in high office, you have to have a certain, you have to have a certain ego to survive.
Yes.
Like, you have to have a certain amount of self-confidence, arrogance frankly, to, to be able to put yourself out there and do the thing, right?
I will lead you.
Yeah, I will lead you to even launch it. Yeah. And then I think about the campaigning and what you've told me. And I thought, well, then now you're having your ego just checked every day.
There's something about being in charge, as we call, you know,
Yeah.
of people that are old enough to be your grandparents and parents. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
They're coming, they're coming to you being like, "Charlotte, can I have permission to do it?" And you, you know, like my dad coming and doing that. And there is something that-
Is weird.
Is weird about that, yeah. And you're right, like, I remember when I went and voted myself on the day of election, there was an older lady that recognized me as the guy that we're all voting for or against.
Right.
A lot of people did when I was standing in line.
Yeah, because it's not a big town. What's the population of the town?
Like 15,000 or something. And, uh, as I'm walking out, this one lady's walking in and she looked at me and just went,
Like?
"Don't let me down" or whatever.
Oh, or like, "I got you."
Got you, yeah, yeah, yeah. But it was just kind of like, for that little look she gave me, it was just kind of, and that struck with me too again of like, ah, gosh, I'm like, you know, being charged, yeah, 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 yeah. And like run something of, of-
Wow.
Of people who are older. Yeah, you know, it kind of struck with me doing that.
That's a different kind of pressure.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
It is. And, uh, I, yeah, a thousand houses, I campaigned for six months. Uh, you end up getting a kit over time. I had my campaigning kit. You'd have, I, I only have rifles. I don't have handguns, so I couldn't carry. I would have after a while. Yeah, um, and then I would, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I feel like that's a whole other noun combo.
Yeah, yeah, I would have, I would have carried if I, if, if after a certain time of running across certain houses, especially with how hostile people are towards just politicians sometimes.
Yeah, because you're also driving onto their private property to-
Yeah, 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 yeah. And you don't, and, yeah, yeah, right, going door to door.
Yeah. And it's Guthrie, so it's rural. So sometimes you're not doing just neighborhoods. You're driving down a gravel road.
Right, right.
Turning on to their property into a gate.
"Who are you?" Right, right, right. One guy, I went up to one guy's house and I had my flyers. He didn't see what it was and he just goes, "I told you sons of bitches, I don't need a new roof." It's like, and I joke and he was like, "Nope, nope, not a roofer. It's worse."
Oh, it's worse?
It's a politician. He thought that was funny.
Oh, so he lets you in on talking that one?
Yeah, and it was all good. One guy, I knocked on the door and he went, "Yeah, Adam, I, I know who you are. Look, just, I promise you, I'll vote for you if you just leave."
You're like, "All right."
So I turned around and then I turned back to give him the flyer and he goes, "No, no, 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 no flyer, nothing. I will vote for you. Just get out of here." Now, if they all would have been that way, I would have been like, "Fine."
Great.
Like, "Yeah, yeah, if you're gonna vote for me, I would have been fine."
I mean, so you definitely had people that were like, "I'm not voting for you."
Yeah.
You did X, Y, and Z. I know you.
I had, um-
Or I'm just voting for this other person.
Well, so here's the thing. When I'd see my camp, my opponent's sign in someone's yard, I would still go up and talk to them. And I know I flipped-
Man, that takes-
Yeah. Oh, gosh, that hurts hard.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really awkward. But I did some flipping. I flipped people. Yeah, always go to the people with signs because some people do that just to be nice. They did it with me too. They put my signs in the yard just to be nice.
Yeah.
And they probably did the same thing with her. So always go and do it anyways. They're only going, they haven't, they don't know what you're about, so.
Right, right, right.
But you would go up to those houses and they'd be like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, yeah." And they'd kind of shut the door and like, "Well, they're not voting for me." Right.
Wow.
But I would have, um, I only have rifles in my house, so I would have had a pistol, but I didn't. So I'd have mace, I'd have pliers. I'd have coffee, water, power bars, flyers, laptop, iPad, notebook.
Wow.
Two pairs of shoes, dress shoes, tennis shoes, jacket.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because you'd be in certain terrains, different areas, you'd have different shoes. I, I wore my soles off on my shoes. I had a buy a new pair.
My gosh. What, what were the pliers for?
So when you put-
Because as you started laying it out, it sounded a little like a murder kit. And then you kind of turned a little into water and power bar. Still a murder kit.
If I would have said shovel, we would have been like, shovel, gloves.
Plastic sheeting?
Yeah, plastic bag. No, so you, you have your signs that are on those wireframes. And, and the Oklahoma wind would blow them and break them, so you'd have to cut them off at certain spots.
So when you're walking up to the houses, you're asking, "Can I put a sign in your yard?"
Yeah, and after, and after a while, I stopped asking. I would have them under my arm and if they, and that's where they could see them. And if they were going to, where if they wanted to put a sign in my yard that was right there for them to do it, but I'd stop asking because-
You would just have it?
Yeah, yeah. Because when you ask again, they're like, "Oh, yeah, yeah." And I don't want somebody to do it because of that. I don't want somebody to do it because they're excited to do it.
So you wouldn't leave it there? You would just wait for them to say it? Do you want to put a sign out? Like, if the conversation went well?
Yeah, I just have it under my arm where they could clearly see it.
Wow.
And so I, and I, where, if they really had the urge to do it, they'd say something to me.
Fair enough.
Yeah, whereas opposed to me asking, because I didn't like asking anymore.
Fair enough.
Yeah. The mace, I had mace with me. I never used it.
Like animals?
Uh, I got, okay, so how many times do you think I got bit?
How many? Like, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
I would hope zero.
No, how many?
Three?
Two, close.
Two, okay.
Okay. Next, next trivia question.
But like little, like little dog ankle biters?
I got bit by a chihuahua.
Okay, they bite everybody, yeah.
I got bit by a dog mix, both on my right leg, one on behind my kneecap and the other on my ankle.
Because you're walking in the fence and all-
Yeah, you're walking up to the yard.
Yeah. Well, what about treats instead of mace, you jerk?
Well, no, the mace isn't for the dogs. So I had, so one of the, one of the, one time I was campaigning at a house in our apartment complex, the guy goes, "Yeah, man, there's something you can do for me." And I was like, "What's that?" And he goes, "That guy right there." It's like, "What about him?" He goes, "Man, he's just a son of a bitch, man." And I was like, "Oh, okay."
Like, what am I doing with it?
Yeah, 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 exactly. And he's like, "Man, he's violent." And I was like, "Oh."
This guy's on something.
And I was like, "What?" He's like, "Man," I was like, "Did you?" He goes, "I told the office. They didn't do nothing." I was like, "Did you, did you call the-"
This is your acting skills, Thomas?
Did you call the police? Man, they ain't gonna do shit. One day, I was gonna take care of this myself. Because I invite him over to my apartment. He's sitting right there in the recliner. I go back in my bedroom and I grab a machete. And I'm gonna gut him from his collarbone down to his waist like a seatbelt.
So you're listening to this?
Yeah, yeah, he's telling me. It's like a seat, yeah, like a seatbelt right here.
Oh, my gosh.
And I'm standing behind him. He's in my chair just rocking. He don't suspect a thing. Till finally I raise my hand and I'm ready to bring it down and end his fucking life.
Oh, my God.
And then I thought, yeah, yeah, he's telling me.
Are you just keeping this council politician face?
And he raises his hand too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And he's raising his hand, he's showing, he's like, yeah, and he goes, "I'm ready to bring it down and end his life." And then I thought, "No, I better not. Don't want to have to deal with all that. You know what I'm saying?"
Deal with being a murderer.
And I was just like, "Yeah, there's a lot of paperwork involved when you murder someone."
Is that what you said? Oh, my God. I think that would have been my-
And I just said, "It would have been funny if I was like, well," and I didn't say it right, but after that, then I was like, "Yep, so April 3rd, it's the voting day, okay." I wanted to say, I wanted to say, "Don't, don't do anything until then."
After that, uh, sir, I can't.
Yeah, and then I had, um-
And was there any, any inclination that he's fucking with you? Or was he, was he, he was out of his mind and you were like, "This is for real."
Yeah, it's for real, yeah. No, he wasn't messing with me. Especially when you looked at the area you were in and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And he was confessing too, like wanting me to take care of this.
Take care of that guy?
Get that guy out of here, yeah, cause he was gonna, he was plotting his murder.
I wonder what he's doing today.
And then go through with it. In the back of my mind, I always wonder if I'm gonna hear a story coming out of that area.
Right. And then is that gonna be on you for, like, what, cause you can't do anything about someone who is fantasizing about something.
You can just deny it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the best one, I don't think you told me that one.
Yeah, and then I had.
Did you then have to knock on that guy's door and also ask him to vote for you?
That was what that was, oh, that guy.
The guy that you needed to care about.
Okay, so here's a confession, I have a li, I would get a list at the county courthouse of everybody who's registered and everyone who voted in the last few elections. So you go to prime people. And he was only, he was the actual person on that list that was registered and voted. Whereas then everybody around him wasn't even registered. So yeah, I'm not gonna like spend twenty minutes at a place where you're not even registered to vote anyways.
And what's interesting is you can't vote if you're a felon, right?
Right.
So that means that the guy fantasizing is actually a taxpaying non-felon.
Done anything to anybody, yeah.
That means he went down to the, whatever agency and registered to vote. He was like a, a functional member of society.
Right, 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 and he.
I like it.
Yeah, yeah.
But the guy he wants to kill, he's like, this guy, he can't even vote.
Yeah, I had, I had a guy, um.
And I like, wait, I'm still going back to this guy. He also went to the office and tried to do the correct thing.
Right, right.
Okay.
He did that, they wouldn't do it, the police ain't gonna do shit. So, so to him, you know, take care of it himself. And so he actually carry, was carrying it out and then didn't, thankfully. You know what I mean? Like it goes from his collarbone down to his waist like a seatbelt.
Like a seatbelt.
That's what he said. Like a seatbelt, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, okay.
After that is when I was like, I'm gonna carry.
I'm gonna carry mace, cause this guy came right out.
Yeah, if I, like I said, if I, I have a rifle, I can't carry a rifle with me when I'm like walking around.
I mean, it's a small town.
Maybe I share that, maybe I would have won even larger, yeah.
You have a new, new respect.
New respect.
It's my kinda guy.
Are you voting for me? My kinda guy.
People that hate police are like, yeah.
Yeah, my kinda guy.
The ones that are all about the second amendment, they're like, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
He's the kinda guy I wanna have a beer with.
But then the word, I had one lady open it, she's like, are you Democrat or Republican? And I was like, well, and, and this is why in the next one I didn't, I was like, well, I am a Republican, but she's like, wrong answer, motherfucker. And I wanted to say, and I literally yelled to the door, so is my opponent! So then what they, and then if they'd ever ask, I would never wanna answer, cause like I told you, it's like.
It doesn't matter.
Supposed to be bipartisan, right? It doesn't matter, I've already stood up for hard left, like, issues as far as like, again, if they want an F Trump flag, they have to be able to fly it.
Right.
Just like the F Biden flag.
Right, they have to do it.
They have to be able to do it. So I can't just go like, I'm registered GOP, so.
Right.
Take that anti-Trump flag now, you can't do that. They have a right to say, they have a right to say it.
That's so great.
So, uh, yeah, I had a guy, um, on my street actually, I knocked on the door and he's like, I already talked to you. I was like, um.
You sure?
Nope, he goes, yeah, talked to you yesterday for thirty minutes. I was like, uh.
I think he was trying, he was just trying to.
No, he goes, yes, sir, we talked. And I was like, really? I was like, what did we, I go, did I give you, this is my flyer, was it me? Hold on, goes to the kitchen, comes back with my opponent's flyer, who was a.
Which is a female.
Was a female, was like five two. And he goes, see? Hands it to me. I put it up next to my face. And he goes, okay.
Alright.
Okay, alright, my apologies.
Wow. This is when, what I, what I love about the circle circles, this is when, uh, your acting skills comes into play because you're kinda having to be on the spot with these responses to like disarm people.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have to be able to take all of these like really massive hits to your ego, which is a producer.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And just to be honest with you, it would have crushed me if I'd lost.
Really? Because you put so much into it.
Yeah, and the town and the community and all that, and I knew so many people and it would have, it would have hurt to have lost.
Yeah, you would have moved out.
I would have moved out, but I would.
Go back to Oklahoma City.
I would have moved out, but I would have been like, really? It would have, it would have been hurtful to lose. I got called in the middle of the night, eleven o'clock, cause, cause I told this couple I'd help, if you need anything, call me and they called me in at eleven that night saying there's space aliens in Highland Park and they wanted me to come check it out and I did.
Really? Wait, this was before the voting?
Yeah.
This is when you're trying to get their vote?
This is the, that's why I wanna write a book and a project or a movie called The Candidate, cause all these on there. So I actually did. And I drove to Highland Park and she's out in her nightgown and.
And she's like, there's aliens.
It's just aliens in the backyard. They brought me into their house and the backyard.
You're like, yes ma'am.
I did it, I was like, this town owes me for the stuff I put up with. To do that, yeah, 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 so I, I dealt with that, um.
Cause at that case, you're just there to be like, and I'm, I'm showing you as a. But I care about the city and I care about aliens.
Right, so I went over, I got dressed, I was in like boxers and a t-shirt.
What does Abby say, what does your wife say, she's like, why are you?
When I told her about machete guy, she wanted me to.
Carry mace.
Carry something, yeah.
Now you're investigating aliens.
Right.
She's like, we already investigate ghosts.
I, I, I went out, I went outside to see Highland Park from my house and I'm like, and I'm on the phone with them and I'm like, guys, I don't, I don't see anything. There's no spacecraft above your house. Well, and, and I heard her yelling to her husband on the other side of the phone and he's like, yeah, they're still there. So I was like, alright, hold on, I'll be right over.
So it's walking distance, it was luckily, it was close.
No, I drove over, I went inside, got dressed and then, so I went in my backyard and looked out to see Highland Park to see if there's spaceships above Highland Park and there wasn't any. I actually went out and looked.
This is fantastic.
I had two people telling me they saw it.
This is also gonna be part of the Halloween segment.
They told me they saw it. So I went back inside and I.
Two people.
Yeah, so I went inside and got my clothes, I got my pants on, my shoes on and I drove, I got in my car and I drove over there, it was about like eleven, like eleven thirty at that time. And I got over there and she's waiting for me out in her yard and, and, uh.
Okay.
And she.
Sometimes you just gotta meet people where they are, you know what I mean? You just gotta accept.
She's like, come on, they're in the backyard, guy's in by the hand, takes me into their house, into the backyard. And he's, he's in a, the, the husband's on a, on a recliner with a blanket and he's like, they're in the backyard! I'd go with you, but I'm not wearing any pants!
So in this, in this moment, and maybe this is a, a female thing, in this moment, you think this is the night I'm gonna be murdered. Like this is a trick.
No, it's a different one, I had another one where something, I, I had to, I was bracing to.
That you, this is gonna happen, yeah.
Yeah, something's gonna happen.
Okay, but what happens, so when you go in the backyard and she's like, here they are.
Right, right, right.
What was it?
We go in the backyard and she's like, ah, they're right there! And, uh, it was when, do you remember when we could see Mars and Venus?
The, yeah, they lined up next to the moon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that, no, not the one a few weeks ago, it was like, it was like six months ago where you could see the planets out in the sky for a little bit.
Oh.
It was those.
I kinda remember maybe, like it was, I, I know that sometimes like the stars are bigger.
Yes, it, it, it was two planets that you could see, it was Mars and something else. And, uh, they thought it was spacecraft instead. And, uh.
Cause it's kinda twinkling.[1443.84]